Town council meeting to order. I'm going to ask everybody to rise, salute the flag, and remain standing for a moment of silence.
....................................................................................... Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes. Discussion and possible action vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of June 27th and July 1st, 2019, to be accepted, approved by the town council. Do you have a motion?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Proposed ordinances. Notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town of North Providence would consider passage of the following proposed ordinances. Ordinance 19-009, an ordinance amending that certain ordinance numbered 18-014 entitled "One Way Streets: Inumeration to Provide for the One Way Travel on Franklin Street."
Move passage.
A motion? Do I have a second?
Mariano.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Number three, ordinance 19-010, an ordinance of the town of North Providence amending Chapter 19, Section 19, 13, entitled "Drew Trucking: Trucks Over Four Tons (8,000 Pounds) Gross Weight Prohibited on Certain Streets." Make a motion to pass?
Second.
You have a motion to pass and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, Tyler and Lombard Street Abandonment Petition Continuance. Received communication from Attorney John V. McGreen, Attorney for Countryview Holdings, LLC, to ask for a continuance of the petition to abandon portions of Lombard and Tyler Streets that was continued to this date. Is that a continuance or is that a...
That's the letter he wrote to continue to December 3rd.
Okay. I have a letter here from John V. McGreen. "I represent Countryview Holding, LLC, in connection with its petition to abandon a portion of Lombard Street and Tyler Street. Scheduled for a hearing before the North Province Town Council on August 6, 2019. My client requests this matter be continued to the December 3, 2019, meeting to give Countryview an opportunity to appear before the planning board on this matter prior to appearing before the North Province Town Council. Sincerely, John V. McGreen." So, I'll make a motion that we continue this through December 3rd?
Second.
I have a second. Who's second? Hold on a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I need one. Just for the record, I am going to recuse myself for the next two items.
Okay. Item number five, six-month check for the Duke Kitchen &amp; Spirits. Town council to conduct a six-month check on the license for the Duke Kitchen &amp; Spirits at 1839 Smith Street that was granted in January 2019. Anybody here from Duke, please come forward. State your name.
Anthony Manzo.
Anybody, any questions? Go ahead.
We've only been open for a very short time. I know it's a six-month probation, but it's only been open...
Couple months.
A month and a half, two months?
Yeah, almost two months.
Yeah.
So, I think I made the original six-month request. What I had intended was six months from the time they actually opened.
Right, but I asked councillor, and he said because it was six months from then...
Yeah, I said follow the motion of the council and abstain from which the council...
I completely understand that. So, I guess my first question is, have we received any complaints or anything with regard to this?
There is something in your packet, a couple of calls.
We actually had a couple of calls from, it was a noise ordinance, that the police came and then they reported that it was fraudulent, there was no, there was no noise. We did have another incident that there was a, around closing time, there was a lady that was walking by, and she came in and asked for help. So, we asked her to stay outside, we gave her some water, we called the police, they came, they did administer help to her, and they took her to Fatima Hospital. Those are the only things that happened in the time we were open.
Any more questions?
So, what I would ask, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels about this, is maybe we just put this on in maybe three months, just to, again, just see how it's going, allow them a little bit more time to operate. So far, it seems okay.
Yeah, well, I think, when did you open?
June 20th.
They only opened June 20th. They've been open like six weeks. So, why didn't you just make it another six months from now?
I don't have a problem with that.
And, you know, we don't mind coming back.
Okay.
You know, I think it's good. You know, make sure everything's clean, like it's been.
So, you wanted six months rather than three months?
Yeah.
Well, that's right.
Well, whatever you guys want. So, you know, we're fair with you. At the beginning, when they opened, they had problems with their AC units, so there wasn't too many people there. But we rectify that, we put a brand-new AC in there, it's ice cold, and they're starting to do some, you know, they're starting to do some business now.
So, they're going to be, they're going to come back up for renewal December 1? So, what I would request is that we just, we put it on for the December meeting?
Perfect.
That's about four months instead, and you're going to be up for renewal anyway, along with all the other liquor licenses in the town, so I do that properly.
Make sure all the taxes are paid and everything, and December 1 will be in.
So, I would make a motion that we just put it on for review for the December meeting.
I'll second that. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to continue this until the December 1st. We know...
Yeah, I...
Go ahead.
We already seconded it.
Oh, you never... Did you do, did you do a continuance?
Yes.
All right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, okay.
Thank you, counsel.
That, stay up. Oh, stay up.
Item number six, expansion of liquor license outdoor dining premises of the Duke Kitchen &amp; Spirits for one day. Received a request from Joseph Arroyo, owner of the Duke Kitchen &amp; Spirits, for permission for expansion of liquor license dining premises at 1839 Smith Street, North Province, Rhode Island, for Saturday, September 7, 2019.
What they're planning on doing is they're having a one-day grand opening, so they're asking for that one-day extension. They want the mayor to come and cut the ribbon, the newspaper to come and do, is going to do an article on them, on grand open, The Observer, so they want a one-day so they can have this extension.
What are the hours on that?
Please?
What are the hours on that?
Well, they open up at, for lunch, and then they'll go to like...
And the lock time, 11:00.
Yeah, by 8:00 PM.
11:00 to 8:00?
11:00 to 8:00, it says in here.
Right.
Okay.
They want to put up a tent that'll allow them to put their goods outside.
Where they're going to put that, like all the parking spots, huh?
Yeah, they'll put it on the side, towards the left-hand side of, you know...
Any questions, gentlemen?
Yes, councilman. I'm not sure that this is a question about the event or just in general, but I see on the schematic for the event, you make reference to full-time parking at Citizens Bank. Is that something that's already in place, or is it going to be in place after this event?
Yeah, we put that in place, we have permission to valet park cars there.
So, any night you're open, is that...
Yeah, well, Citizen Banks close that night.
Right.
So, it'll be a night thing.
Okay.
So, that's, that's actually a nice thing for the place, so we can, especially that day.
Right.
We'll be valeting, we'll be valeting parked cars for that event.
So, on a Saturday, I believe they close at 2:00 PM, so you'd be valeting thereafter too, is that, is that the plan?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. What's your plan with regard to the liquor and beer service outside? Is that, is that tent area going to be fenced off in any way as far as people kind of walking in, walking out? What's your plan with regard to that?
We're going to fence everything along that is going to be included. We're just going to serve beer outside, probably put everything in plastic cups, there's no bottles hanging around, and just provide enough garbage so that everything gets disposed properly, and then everything will come inside at 8:00. I've also got that.
They just want to do their grand opening, they haven't had that yet, due to that AC problem, and...
You all just want to have food outside?
Yeah, and then when they're, you know, they've been telling the mayor that, they wanted to invite the mayor to do this big ribbon cut and get the exposure, so it'll be good for the business.
Anything else? Motion to approve?
We got to make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Should we just check and see if there's any members of the public?
Anybody in the public want to speak? There's nobody here, I know there was, I didn't see anybody. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Here we end. I didn't, I didn't see anybody. That one woman shows up all the time. That one woman. Okay, item number seven, entertainment license. Town council considering impossible vote on a application for entertainment license filed by Cafe Zorba Pizza and Pub, 1370 Mill Spring Avenue, North Providence. Zorba here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Sotirios Katsaras.
Any questions, gentlemen? What kind of entertainment are you going to have?
Just a karaoke.
Karaoke.
What nights of the week are you planning on using this?
Probably a slow night, Tuesday night maybe, or Wednesday night.
Mr. Katsaras, until about what time do you think that the entertainment would be?
I would say to the kitchens close, 7:00 to 10:00.
7:00 to 10:00.
Okay, I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Anybody out there want to speak against this? Okay, motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. What about those guys?
Finance Committee Report. The Finance Committee. 27 comes under Finance.
27?
Yeah, 27 comes under Finance for Colonial Power.
All right. I'm going to move item number 27 up now. Finance Committee Report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the Finance Committee Report to be presented by Councilman Ameri.
Thank you, councilman. So, on July 18th, the Finance Committee met. It was, the meeting was attended by the full Finance Committee, Finance Committee, also Councilman DiLorenzo was there, a member of the community, as long, as well as a contingent from Colonial Power Group. They spent about an hour with us, actually a little over an hour, and they presented in-depth as to what their program entails, and if we were so to choose to move forward with it, how to implement it. I can't necessarily go over every single thing we discussed, but we all asked quite a few questions about the concerns that were brought up about a year ago when they first came before us. Some of those questions included what the process is to get the program off the ground, especially because this program is new to Rhode Island. We also asked how does one opt out of the program, and if there would be any public education as to how to do so, and, like I said, just a bevy of other questions with regards to how the program works. At the conclusion of it, we did invite representatives from Colonial Power to attend tonight in case anyone in the community had a question, or anyone on the larger council. I don't know if they wanted to speak at this time, or if you wanted me to make motions first.
Oh, you gentlemen want to come up? Anybody got any questions on this? I got one question. When you originally came before us...
Can we just state his name for the record?
Pardon?
His name?
Okay, just state your name, please.
My name is Tom Ahern, former administrator with the Rhode Island Division of Public Utilities and Carriers, and now serve as a consultant for the Colonial Power Group. We're introducing a municipal aggregation electric plan. This is the first community in Rhode Island that would entertain our services. In Massachusetts, there's 300 municipalities, of which 75 use our services, and I'm proud to say most recently, the city of Boston signed on to a contract with us. In essence, for members of the audience, electricity is comprised of two parts. The supply, which is the generation of kilowatts...
You got to, you got to speak to, speak to the council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supply, which is the generation of kilowatts, and the distribution, which is the delivery. This program only encompasses the supply. Narragansett goes out and purchases electricity for the state of Rhode Island. They, by PUC rules, have to purchase electricity at five different points in a two-and-a-half year period. So, they're forced to buy when it's high, and they're fortunate when it's low. Colonial Power, as the aggregator, selectively purchases when the price is low. That's how they can come in and provide a lower price. If Colonial Power cannot provide a lower price to the municipal for aggregation purposes, they're not going to do business with the municipality. So, by way of explanation, at the present time, what we're asking the council to do is to pass a resolution empowering Colonial to go out to the marketplace, to look for electricity, and then go to the Public Utilities Commission to get permission to come back to you and say, what do you think? You want to sign on? There's no financial commitment to the town at this point, there's no time commitment to the town at this point. If anybody does not want to participate, they don't have to. All we can do is save money for the people. If we can't save money, we won't present it.
Councilman DiLorenzo.
Okay, a few questions.
Second.
You came before us last year, I remember, and when you first started talking to us about doing this, you said there could be anywhere from a $15 to $18 a month savings last year.
Per, per customer?
Per customer. That's the original, the original time you guys keep the talk, that was told to us, am I correct, Councilman Juiste?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, let's pick it up for a second.
Oh, an annual, not monthly?
Okay, so that's, that's the...
Okay.
That's what I want to ask you. See, it first came to us at $15, $18 per month. Then when you came in front of the Finance Committee last year, it was down to about a dollar fifty, maybe a dollar eight. Okay, so now, because I want to make this clear, in the breeze, two weeks ago, in the breeze, it showed $15 a month again. So, I want to make sure that we have it all clear, that it's really not $15 a month.
You are absolutely correct, it's not $15 a month.
Okay, so, and I want to make sure I understand this correctly, and that everybody else understands it. So, you're talking, it's really more like a dollar fifty per month.
Per subscriber?
Per subscriber.
Of which, of which of the town...
So, everyone in the audience, in there, aren't there, that you're going to see a dollar fifty savings per month with your company?
Well, they...
In and around. I'm not going to say dollar fifty, to be dollar eight.
It's based on the usage. For example, a customer that uses 500 kilowatt-hours, if you're saving a penny on a kilowatt-hour, that's a $5 a month savings. If you live in the senior center complex, and your electric bill is very low, let's say your electric bill is, you use 150, 100 kilowatt-hours a month.
Right.
That's a dollar. Now, to go out and individually approach each individual customer, to have them sign on to this program, would be a magnificent time commitment, and you wouldn't get people to sign on and buy you.
Okay, that's, that's my next question, if I may. My next question is, let's say this town council says, we like the idea of it, we want to help naturally our constituents save money, we all do, including me, but if we say, go ahead, we automatically, let's say this all works, we automatically sign everyone up in this town, am I correct when I say that? In other words, if this council gives you a resolution to say, okay, go ahead, go forward, go forward?
Yeah, that's what he's about to say.
Do we all automatically, everyone gets signed into that program?
Unless somebody has an existing supplier that is not Narragansett Electric. If you have already entered into a contract with Constellation Energy, we don't touch that. If you're not a standard offer, standard offer customer, we do not touch that. And what we do is we aggregate the load from everybody that's a standard offer customer, and then we go to the world and we say, if you like it, you don't have to do anything. If you don't like it, we'll take you off the list, and the only thing you're not going to get is the opportunity to save money. They can get back on later, they can drop out at any time they want.
Okay, so the answer to my original question is, everyone gets signed up for it?
Unless they have an existing contract with another provider, that is correct. That's the municipal aggregation.
My, my only problem with that is, being a community of a lot of seniors...
Pardon me?
My only problem with the whole thing is, being a community with a lot of seniors, right? They might not know that they've been switched to another company, and some of them don't know how to get out of it, won't know how to back out if they don't want it, and that's, that's the only part that bothers me, is when you want to automatically sign everybody up. Now you've put the burden on the, on the, on the electric buyer to decide whether he wants to stay or leave.
Well, they get signed up because they're going to save money. If they don't want to save money, and they want to get off the program, we'll take them off.
Yeah, but that's, that's the point. Some of the people don't even know, I don't want to say it the wrong way, in other words, it's very difficult for them to, to handle stuff like that, you know what I'm saying?
People don't follow electricity like they follow their stop-and-stop bill. I understand that. We're going to have information meetings at the senior center, where we will instruct everybody how they're going to save money. If they want to opt out, we'll take them out at any time. We will have people available to answer any questions they want answered.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
But what you're asking us to do tonight is not to opt anybody into the program. All you're asking us to do tonight is to pass a resolution for you to go out and see what's available, and then we would have to take an additional step where, prior to doing that, we would have informational meetings and let everybody know if it was something that we even wanted to consider, that would be a second additional resolution, a second additional step that we would have to take. Tonight, we will not be opting anybody into any program.
Tonight empowers Colonial Power Group to go out and find suppliers of electricity. The town is under no financial commitment, time commitment, or what have you. Right now, the Narragansett Electric standard offer price right now is 9.52 cents a kilowatt-hour. If I come back to you and say, I'm going to give it to you for 9.53, you're going to tell me to go jump in the lake. I've got to get a pretty good savings for you people to want to pass that opportunity on to your constituents to save money. If I can't do that, I won't present it. You are not being bound whatsoever, but the state law requires any aggregator of power file the plan before you even say yes or no with the Department of Public Utilities. We can't do that unless I have a resolution from the town authorizing Colonial Power to go forward. That's what we're asking for.
Okay, so once, once you do get that, let's say they make a resolution for you to do that, and you go to the, wherever you're going to go with it, are we now bound by it? I think that's the question you're kind of asking.
No, we're not.
Right.
We would have to take, we would have to take a second step...
Right.
...in order to actually opt anybody into the program.
Mr. President, yeah, so, the motion that I was going to propose tonight, not to put the cart in front of the horse, but is to pass the resolution, so as Ms. Ahern said, they can go out, field prices, and then present the plan to the PUC. I was going to make a second motion, asking the, we have a draft of a contract, and asking that we send that back to the Finance Committee to review, so we know specifically what it is that the town would be getting themselves into, should we decide to enter this agreement. With regards to some of the other concerns that are being brought up tonight, I mean, it's very clear that we are not opting anybody into anything tonight, we're just giving them the ability to do the necessary legwork. And also with regards to this constant question of, are we signing everybody up for something? In essence, yes, we would be, unless they already have a private, third-party provider. That being said, anytime this council takes any legislative action, we're signing people up for something, with, against their will or not. For example, the trash toads. We purchased trash toads, and we provided them to everybody in town. We didn't ask the opinions of the individual residents whether or not they wanted to, but this is a representative form of government, so we used our best judgment based upon what we were hearing from the people, and we made a decision. People can't even opt out of the trash barrel program while their trash won't get picked up. This, they can opt out of, and I felt very comfortable, and I don't want to speak for the rest of the committee, but we felt very comfortable that Colonial Power is going to literally over-inform our constituency as to how to opt out and opt back in if need be, including public programs, going to the senior center, going to the high-rises, mailings, you know, they've done this, they're a very successful group, and I think we're nitpicking certain issues. I think we should just give them the ability to go out, take the first steps in the process, and see where it goes from there. We will maintain control of this, there's no contract signed tonight. Somebody from the community wants to speak.
I have a question.
Absolutely, come forward, please. State your name.
I have something else. I just, my name's Robyn Giacominie, 22 Walter Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. I just have a question, why does the PUC mandate that you get a resolution from the council? What do they, what do you mean by you have to get permission to be an aggregated vendor?
Is state...
Aggregated, yes.
Aggregated, yeah. Fundably electricity for all residents of the town.
Why do they, why does the PUC require you to get a municipal resolution?
Good question. Title 39 of state law requires the municipality to pass a resolution allowing any aggregator to even go speak or seek power on their behalf.
Okay.
So, I could...
So, it's simply just an enabling...
Compliance to state law.
Okay.
And that's what we're asking for, see. If I come back there and I said, Narragansett charges 9 cents, I'm going to charge you 10 cents, you're not going to jump out the window. If I come back and say, Narragansett charges 9 cents, I'm going to get 8.5, you may say, well, that's not enough, I got food. Alice, those of the senior centers, she's going to be all confused, she's not going to know what to do to save money. We're not going to do that.
Going back to the PUC, so you get permission from them, right, the resolution passes, yes. What does the PUC then allow, have you do?
PUC has to approve the plan that we file with them, which is, they're going to buy so many megawatts of power from Constellations, so many megawatts of power from Flora Power Light, we're going to charge North Providence 7.5 cents, it's going to be a period from A to B.
I get that, I get that, it's about saving costs, okay. What I'm trying to understand is the PUC mandate that the town community then have to, does, do they have any involvement in the opting in or opting out process?
PUC, no.
Okay, so you have to come back to them for permission to do the opt-in, opt-out?
Yeah.
The individual electricians, residents of the customer, will save to Colonial Power, don't commit...
No, no, there's a, there's a gap. When you get the permission from the PUC to do what you're doing, you have to ask the council again? When you get the permission from the PUC to do what you're doing, you have to ask the council again
Come back to the council.
for permission to ask?
Implement the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. If I may, Mr. President, it's also worth stating that if we get to a point where we're going to sign a contract, I would challenge anybody in this room to say that Mayor Lombardi would sign a contract that wouldn't save people money. I mean, his whole approach to running this town is to run it as a business. And I would also state, and this is something we discussed a couple of weeks ago, that they have the ability, meaning Colonial Power, to go out and keep shopping for energy prices. So if they find a better price than what we've even signed on to, we rip the contract up and sign a new one the next day, which I'm sure the mayor would also advocate for. So there's some flexibility here that doesn't exist in the private market, and I don't think any of us would sign it. I mean, I live here too, we all live here, we all have to pay electric bills. I don't think we would sign anybody up for something that's going to cost us more money.
Please state your name.
Michael Caswell, 46, Sherwood Ave. I just have one question, will the bill come in under Narragansett Electric?
The bill is delivered by Narragansett Electric, they supply the power. The only thing you will notice, there'll be a two-word change on your bill, or three things. Number one, the bill will be less, and then it will say, energy supplied by, instead of national grid, it will be energy supplied by North Providence Usable Aggregation Plant. That's the only difference. The bill will get the same, it comes the same day, it's just going to be cheaper.
I have a third party that I get my electric from. I think the only issue would be, I get the Narragansett bill and I get a third party. People who get this will not know, because it's a Narragansett bill, that it's being supplied by a third party. I think if you're going to move forward, you need to let people know that it is going to be a third party that is supplying them. Because it will come in under a Narragansett bill and no one's going to look to see who the supplier is.
If I may, Mr. Caswell, so in Massachusetts, so if we choose to sign a contract eventually, we'll be the first Rhode Island community. But in Massachusetts, the initial bill that goes out that's being billed with the third party is also a notice that goes along with it that essentially explains what the town has opted into, how to read the bill, and basically what their options are if they don't want to participate. And like I said, Colonial Power is also committed to doing some actual public outreach. We had actually discussed during the Finance Committee meeting to maybe have an open forum before we sign any contract, so.
I understand that, sir, but you see how many people are here tonight. An open forum does not bring the whole community together. So there are going to be people who are getting the bill and do not realize that it is a third party that is supplying them. So maybe if you do sign the contract, you can send out a letter to all participants that it is going to be a third party that is supplying them. Explain to them the options that they have to opt out, because not everybody is going to attend a meeting.
Right, and that does go out with the bill.
We have made a commitment to do that, to provide the notice to the residents of the town, provide informational community satisfaction to them, and ask the question. You get a separate bill from your supplier.
No, mine comes from Narragansett Electric.
So they're billing on behalf of AutoBar on my way, so it's the same thing?
I understand that, but it comes in and it looks like a Narragansett bill used to look, other than, like you said, very small print, supplied by.
Right.
But if I didn't know, I would just think it's still Narragansett Electric giving me the energy.
Well, Narragansett does deliver it to you.
Right.
People ask the question, what happens if I don't pay the bill? They can't shut me off. People ask, what happens if there's a storm and the wires down? Does the coal and that warm fix? No, it's all still Narragansett.
It's all still Narragansett. I just think people need to do their homework and be advised and educated as to what's going to transpire. I'm all for saving money, I did it myself, I went to a third party. So I agree with going to a lesser amount, just educate the people on it, that's all I ask.
Sir, just to address what you were saying, I think that's exactly one of the prime concerns here. But Colonial Power did come to the Finance Committee and they were open and upfront about everything, and they're willing to work with us with those concerns. That is a concern of the council, to make sure that the proper community outreach is there. Again, tonight, we're just focusing on that first step, which won't commit us to anything. So at that point, I would anticipate, and I wouldn't really feel comfortable moving forward to the next step unless there was a significant amount of community engagement involved. So I think that those concerns will be addressed as time goes on.
Oh, I understand, and we elect you to handle our affairs because we have our own lives to deal with and we appreciate what you do. But I have concerns also, so I just wanted to stress and let everybody know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yes, so the motion is to, I'm making a motion to, that the council pass the resolution enabling Colonial Power to. All right, if I may, Councilman Juasty, I'm going to read it specifically as it's written.
So I'm going to make a motion that the North Providence Town Council publicly declares its intent to become an aggregator of electric power on behalf of its residential and business electric customers and to reestablish such plan if its operation is suspended and to negotiate and enter into such contracts for power supply pursuant to the plan or services for such plan with the understanding that if a power supply contract is executed, individual customers would retain the option not to participate in the aggregation plant and instead to choose any electricity alternatives they desire and further to take such action relative heretofore as may be appropriate and necessary.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
And so there'll be a second motion, Councilman Juasty. I'd like to make a motion to refer this matter to the Finance Committee for the purposes of reviewing the draft contract that has been provided to us.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the other thing is, do we have a motion to accept the Finance Committee's report? Is that a general report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, number eight, private detective license. Town council is to consider approval of renewal of a private detective license for David Lucier of 6 Sorrel Road, North Providence. David here?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Anybody got any questions for David? Have a motion to approve?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Private detective license. Town council to consider approval of renewal of a private detective license from Michael Caswell of 46 Sherwood Ave, North Providence. Anybody have any questions?
I have a copy of the bond if anybody's interested in it.
No, I know we are.
You can bring it to us.
You've got to bring it to the court, sir. Motion?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Family Eddie, seconded by D. Lorenzo. D. Lorenzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Holiday sales license. Town council to consider the approval of a holiday sales license from Smoke Stack Cigar Shop, 2009 Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Any questions?
Can you just, are you Ellen or Michael?
Pardon me?
Say your name. Say your name. Your name.
Ellen or Michael.
Any questions, people? No? Motion to approve?
Well, actually, one question. Are there particular holidays that you're looking to stay open for, or you just want a blanket authorization?
I would like a blanket authorization for pretty much all the holidays.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Vacuating license. Town council to consider the approval of a vacuating license from Middle Spring Cafe LLC, DBA Tropical Smoothie Cafe, 1565 Middle Spring Avenue. State your name, please.
James Dumont Jr.
What was it? Any questions? Where are you located?
Right next to Pizza Hut and Coco Nails, 1565 Middle Spring Ave.
No questions? Motion for approval?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Vacuating license. Town council to consider the approval of a vacuating license from Khalid Alahamad, doing business as Kazamaza Restaurant, 146 Waterman Ave, North Providence.
I'd like to make a mo-
We had a problem with them. They didn't have a license or anything when they opened up, they didn't have.
Okay, what happened was, someone called and said there was a restaurant there. I called them up, and it used to be a convenience store. And they thought that their convenience store could be a restaurant license. I explained to them that they had to get Health Department approval, and they said that they did. Well, the Health Department gave them a market license instead of a restaurant vacuating license, okay? So they squeered that away with the Health Department. I was on the phone back and forth with the Health Department person, representative. But I told them that as well, they had to get a vacuating license from the town. And we told them that they had to show up, they filled this out, and that's where we're at.
Do we know how long they've been operating?
At least a month.
It was a few months. They had probably four to six months. They had just transformed their store into a, it was like a 7-Eleven kind of store, like a convenience store. And they transformed it into a license. And it was someone at the Health Department that did make a mistake because I did talk to the supervisor who said they should not have told them that they could have run a restaurant with a market license. So it was kind of a little bit of, you know, misunderstanding their part and someone at the Health Department didn't really do what they were supposed to do. So they did come to me, once they got the restaurant license from the Health Department, and it looked on the other note. But I told them that we need, and as long as they were Health Department licensed, I figured they were okay. And it would be a week or two that they would come here and get our license. But as long as they were, I said they couldn't open without a Health Department license.
Are they in operation right now?
Yeah.
As far as I know, I don't go down that way that often.
Yeah, they are. I've gone by it, I've gone by it a couple of times and they're in operation.
With the exception of the original inquiry that you got with regard to whether they were a restaurant or not a restaurant, have you received any other complaints with regard to this location? If, provided there's nobody here to object, I'd be inclined to make a motion to approve this license.
They do need a license, I mean, to operate. And I can attest that I did talk to the Health Department about the misunderstandings and whatnot.
You make an informer, what was your, I'm sorry?
Before, I mean, is there anybody going to second? I would suggest that we approve the license for one month. I'd make a motion to approve the license for one month, having to come back.
I'll second that motion. Give them another chance to come back.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is, we're going to approve the license for one month, and they got to appear at the next meeting. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. No street sign, no parking sign on Third Street. Ralph Jemani requests to appear before the council regarding a no parking sign across from 17 Third Street. Ralph here?
Ralph Jemani. I need 25 more feet to rectify my situation. Yeah, I'm disabled. I became disabled two years ago, I have arthritis, I have mobility issues. And I have to keep going across the street, ask the neighbors and people who park across the street. Third Street's a narrow street, and I can't, it's a one-way, I can't make the swing. I have to, it's hard for me to, I have to keep going across the street, ask them to move. It's becoming a nuisance. Then, most of the time, I ask them, then I have to call the police. But I mean, if I have to, I will.
Councilman D. Lorenzo?
I was wondering if you could help me out in any way, that's why I'm here.
Mr. Jemani?
Yes.
We've talked 15, 20 times, me and you, as to what to do. I know that myself, Councilman Martin, as well as Councilor O'Dea, we've all tried to do whatever we can for you. So we went to the Police Department to do a study. When they did the study, they went to the Ordinance Committee, which was then led by Councilman Juisty.
Yeah.
And they came up with a, they came up with a half. I don't know what else you're looking to do. I know we've tried many ways for you to get a little bit more, but the Police Department and the Ordinance Committee, everybody has looked and gave you what they thought was okay. I don't know what to say to you at this point, to get you more.
It's taken care of half of my problem. I, you know, it's got to go a little more to make it right.
Can I ask a question? So the issue is, there are people parking directly behind your driveway?
Yes, the problem is, there's not another driveway opposite mine.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
A lot of the houses have driveways across, they don't have this issue. But I have an issue because there's no driveway across. I mean, the street's narrow, it's a one-way. If it wasn't a one-way, I could make, I could go all the other way, you know, and swing towards Smith Street, but I can't do it.
I just, I'm trying to help you. I know I've been trying to help you for a while.
I wish you could come out there, and I could show you, I could get in my car and actually do it, and you'll say, it can't be done.
I go by it every night, I see it.
I wouldn't be here, you know, I'm not here because of that. I have no other reason to come here for that, it's because of that. I don't know why, I mean.
I want to make a motion to send this back to the Ordinance Committee to have a look at it a second time, and also make a motion to have the Police Department there a second time as well. To, let's go over it again and see what we can do.
I'll second that motion.
Does that work for you?
Yes, it does, and I'm very, very grateful that it took care of half the problem. I appreciate that very much. Just a little more.
We're getting there.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
The ayes have it, thank you. Okay, item number 14, jazz band. Discussion and possible vote regarding communication from Catherine Feist and Tyler Wild Shirico for permission to have a jazz band at 10 Gaynor Ave on Saturday, July 18, 2020, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for their wedding reception. The Brighton Room here?
I'd like to make a motion to continue this at the next town council meeting.
Continue it. Motion has been made to continue. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion to continue. Number 15, E-911 Service Resolution. Receive request from Robin Giacometi to appear for council support of resolution E-9011.
Oh, should be E-911.
Yeah.
My name is Robin Giacometi, 22 Walter Avenue, North Providence.
Uh, originally I was coming here to ask for the council's support regarding this resolution before we were lucky enough to obtain the restricted receipt account on the 911 fees. But, um, I would still like to ask the council to support the resolution as it stands because there are a number of items in the resolution that still have, are up in the air and we don't know, uh, everything is moving, gonna move along in the next session. So I'm, I lack clarity in some of the areas of, of, such as the 911 Advisory Commission. Um, it's supposed to be reconstituted. The Speaker of the House in my meeting with him told me he appointed his three people. And basically where we're at right now is trying to find out what happened with the speakers, I mean, with Senator Ruggiero's people and with the Governor's people, so we don't know where all that stands. So as of right now, the resolution, I don't know if it's exactly is the one that I had submitted to you as written, but the, um, what's changed about it in here is that we have the restricted receipt account. There is some, there are some particulars associated with that, such as there has been a reduction in the fee that has not fully processed through the rulemaking process yet, so we don't know where that completely stands. And there's been an additional fee unfortunately added to kind of capture the $10 million on the books and we don't know where the FCC lawyers stand. So there are a lot of what-ifs still to be recovered. But what I can tell you is that pre the end of the session, Boroughville supported this resolution, Central Falls supported this resolution, North Smithfield supported this resolution. Cranston was in the process of putting it on its docket. I don't know what happened to that one. Uh, it was Boroughville, it was North Smithfield, it was, uh, Central Falls and I'm here before you now, so you're gonna be number four. We were in the process of moving forward with getting support around the state for the restricted receipt account and for reasons that would provide, uh, local, uh, 911 dispatch with the proper funding that it needed to make the appropriate connection to the state system. So this is a very complex matter and one tiny little piece of it has been addressed, but in a slightly inappropriate way, so I, everything is a lot of, it's still up in the air. So your support for this resolution would, you would join the rest of the cities and towns and, and if, as everything is moving forward, I foresee with the possibility, we have to continue to march through the state and ask for councils to support each other on, on this.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Jacomie, am I saying it correct?
Jacomie, yes.
Jacomie. So I know that Council President Odiello, who's unfortunately not here tonight, had taken a particular interest in this and as I know you know, um, he's very tied into the affairs at the State House. So due to its complexity and the fact that he's not available, but he does sit, um, on all the committees as president, I was gonna make a, or I am making a motion to refer this to Ordinance Committee for, uh, further study and a recommendation.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Item number sixteen, ordinance introduction. Discussion and possible vote to introduce ordinance 19-011, amending chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town in North Providence to add section 27 entitled Mattress Disposal.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to advertise this ordinance for public hearing for the September meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seventeen, renaming Monticello Street. Councilman Familietti requests discussion and possible vote on the renaming of Monticello Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Monticello Street is a street that runs off of Woodward Road. Uh, it was brought to my attention that, uh, there's actually a Monticello Street in Providence with the same zip code. So you have Monticello Street, North Providence, 02904, Monticello Street, Providence, 02904. It's causing an issue with the mail. Um, what I think we'd be looking for is not to change Monticello, but to change the, uh, the street to Avenue, Road, Way, whatever the case might be. I know there are some people who live on Monticello Street that are here tonight. Um, I would invite them, with your permission, up to speak about this.
Good evening. William Scullion, 29, Monticello Street, North Providence. Uh, I spoke to Councilman Familietti about the issue. Main reason is, uh, Monticello Street, like he stated, in Providence is off Branch Avenue behind St. Anne's Church, 02904. Monticello off Woodward Road between Palm and Woodward is 02904. Packages that are being delivered to my home, um, constantly, 99.9% of the time, I wait for the phone call. I tell them, "Put in your notes, it's off Woodward." "Oh yeah, we'll find it, we'll find it." I've had Chinese food, go to Monticello. I've had Lowe's, Home Depot. I've even gone to Monticello to see my other home, but it's a three-decker, so I just wait for the phone call and that's what happens. It's just aggravation and like I told the councilmen, I didn't want the name changed fully. But, I mean, it is a, a cut through from Palm to Woodward, so if you wanna name it Seaconc Speedway, that's fine. But, I mean, Drive Street, I don't know if it's gonna make a difference because when you put it in the thing, you know, 02904 is there and I don't know if it's gonna happen.
It won't make a difference to us, Bill, but-
It will to me.
To you, it's gonna make a difference.
And my delivery people.
You're gonna have to change, you're gonna have to change a lot of things, like you check-
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, I, I know I gotta check with the other residents on the street first naturally. Uh, I'm sure, you know, there's 14 houses on that street. I don't think they would have a problem with it. Some of them maybe will.
That has not been done yet?
Well, the first thing we should do is refer this to the Ordinance Committee.
Yeah.
That would be the first step.
No, but I plan on putting a list together and going door to door.
And then we'll properly address it at the ordinance committee.
I just didn't know the first step to take it and I spoke to the councilman.
Any preference? Any preference? You want Avenue, Drive, uh?
Doesn't make a difference. Drive's fine. Way.
So, so Bill, maybe, um, when you draft the petition or whatever, just leave it vague and that way the Ordinance Committee can decide what the best moniker would be, that that will, you know, alleviate that confusion.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll, you know, hear from the police and, and make a decision.
Okay. And any timeline for that? Do you?
I would plan on having the Ordinance Committee meeting the end of this month. So, um, you have about probably three weeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Given everything that we've heard, um, and given past practice, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the Ordinance Committee.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Yeah, all right. Okay. Number eighteen, speeding issues. Councilman Familietti requests discussion and possible vote on speeding issues on Springdale Ave.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this was brought to my attention that Springdale, which is actually a hill, um, there are a couple people speeding up the, the hill. Um, there are children that play on the street. So, uh, whenever anything's involving children, safety, I think we should take a look at it. Um, I'd like to make two motions. First motion is to, um, send a letter to DPW instructing them or asking them to erect a sign, requesting reduced speed due to children at play.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The second motion I'd like to make on this is to refer this matter to the Ordinance Committee to see if there's any, uh, additional action that needs to be taken place.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. How's that?
We have for that one.
Number nineteen, traffic issues. Councilman Familietti requests discussion and possible vote on traffic issues on West River Parkway.
Mr. President, this is, um, uh, in Lee's Platte. Typically, or most of the streets have stop signs on West River Parkway, kind of reduce the speed, but the portion of West River Parkway that runs from, uh, would be Douglas and it would curve around to Countryside. There is no stop sign in there, so that's turning into a speeding issue. So I'd, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the Ordinance Committee to see if there's, uh, any need for a stop sign in between.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number twenty, parking issues. Councilman Amy Reedy requests discussion and possible vote on parking issues on Garfield Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure everyone's sick of hearing the name Garfield Street, but, um, we, we have everything almost completely under control. However, there was a pretty serious, uh, incident a few weeks ago where a, a rescue couldn't get through due to the cars being parked on both sides of the street. Uh, it was, uh, I believe, a cardiac issue and it could have turned out a lot worse. So, uh, in short, I'd like to make a motion to refer, uh, the issue of possibly implementing no parking on Garfield Street and also invite either Lieutenant Taverozzi or his designee to attend and-
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number twenty-one, speeding and traffic issues. Councilman Amy Reedy requests discussion and possible vote on speeding and traffic issues on Jane Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this issue I've already spoken with the North Providence Police about. Uh, they've gone out and monitored and, uh, taken some numbers as to the amount of cars and their speed. They would like to be heard on this issue, so I'm gonna make a motion to refer it to ordinance, uh, so that the police can come and, uh, discuss possible resolutions to the speeding on Jane Street.
Do I have a second to refer this to ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number twenty-two, speeding issues. Councilman Matone requests discussion and possible vote on speeding issues on Upper Fruit Hill Ave.
Yes, so, uh, I received a complaint in regard to, so, uh, speeding issues on Fruit Hill Ave. I would, uh, I would simply make a, make a motion that we refer this to the Ordinance Committee so that we can have a conversation with police, uh, potentially conduct a tra- traffic study, uh, and see if any remedial action needs to be taken.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Referring this to the Ordinance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Pet, pest waste sign. Councilman Matone requests discussion and possible vote on pet waste sign on Frenkrest Ave.
Yes, uh-
I think, I think if you call DPW, they just put one up.
So, so, um, we, we can, uh, we can do that. The only, uh, I know there is, uh, there may be a pet waste sign on that road, uh, to start. So I, I just wasn't sure if it was gonna be completely necessary. Uh, but what I'll do is I, I can call DPW.
Yeah, they'll just put one up way wherever you want it. Okay, storage and trash and recycling bins. Councilman Matone requests discussion and possible vote on storage of trash and recycled bins.
Yes, uh, I received a, a call from a constituent with regard to where people are storing their trash or recycled bins, uh, when, during the week, when they're not actually out at the curb. I, I, my understanding is that there are some other cities and towns that have ordinances with regard to where these bins can be stored. Uh, a- at this point, I'm not sure if it's a, a large problem, a small problem, any problem at all, but, uh, but I did receive, uh, you know, a complaint from a constituent, so I wanted to make sure that we give it its due diligence. And, um, and so I, I would just request that, uh, that we refer this to the Ordinance Committee and so we could take a look at it and see if, uh, if it's something that we, we should consider, um, you know, modifying or doing something about.
Do I have a second to refer this to ordinance? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
The ayes have it. Claims submitted. Town Council discussion and possible vote with regard to claims received from the following. Vincent Ametrono, 2 Dale Drive, North Providence. Norma Orzel, 77 C, Valley Green Court, North Providence. Alicia Kelly, 37 Hobson Ave, North Providence. David Novich, 17 Brookdale Road. And Steve Odiello, 17 Woodhaven Boulevard.
Mr. President, I, I just would like to recuse myself on this matter.
Okay. Be it noted that, uh, Councilman Matone is recusing himself. Okay, at the, uh, Claims Committee meeting, the following decisions were made. Vincent Ametrono, we paid him $100. Norma Orzel, we paid her $232.71. Alicia Kelly was, um, sent to the insurance company. David Novich, we need more information, so he's gonna have to come back with more information. And Steve Odiello, uh, we paid $350. And that, that's the total report.
Do we need to send him a letter about more information or has someone told him?
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna have you send him a letter.
So send a letter for more?
Yeah.
And then I'll talk before the letter goes out as to what kind of information you need.
Yeah, yeah. All right, okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we refer these to the Claims Committee. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, accept the report of the Claims Committee. Do I have a second on that?
Meaning what was the motion?
To, uh, accept the, uh, report from-
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Who made the motion, man?
Familietti made the motion. Oh, I made the motion. Familietti seconded it. Claims Committee report. Did not.
We did that.
Yeah.
We did the finance?
Did the finance. Ordinance Committee report. Town Council discussion with regard to the Ordinance Committee report to be presented by Councilman Familietti. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this past ordinance committee was not nearly as long as next month's ordinance committee meeting will be. Uh, we had three items on the agenda. The first one was, uh, animal breeding. That was continued due to, uh, the fact that the animal control officer could not attend the meeting. Uh, speeding issues on Woodward Road. The south side of Woodward Road was addressed. Um, again, the police has recommended that just increased enforcement and, uh, police presence in that area, but no further action, uh, was recommended by the committee. And, uh, we also had a discussion, possible vote on the use of one's property, the, uh, problem property of Chandler Street, which, uh, we were, received assurances from the, uh, Lieutenant Taverozzi from the North Providence Police Department that substantial progress has been made and no further action was required by the council at this point, but we did continue that to the next ordinance committee meeting just to keep track of that.
I would, uh, just on that last item, I would get something passed so that it doesn't happen again. Because that was pretty, that was pretty horrible two or three years ago.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can discuss and, um, I mean, the Police Department didn't feel that it was being necessary, but we can definitely bring it up again.
Just so it doesn't happen again in the town. Okay, motion to accept the ordinance committee report. Do I have a second? Second it?
Second.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
All right. Dee Lorenz will make the motion. Mario's seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Tax addendums. Town Council discussion in action, possible vote with regard to a list of tax addenda received from tax assessor in the amount of $1,045.39 for motor vehicles. Motion to accept.
I have a question.
Yep.
Just, just, we, the tax addendums that you see on 29 and 30, before these, both of these things-
One's an addendum, one's an addendum.
Okay, so let's do 29 then.
Okay, so, let's do 29 then. Why are these not going into the financial committee?
Because they're under $1,000.
Under $1,000.
Okay, I thought previously that they always went to the financial committee.
No.
Anything over $1,000.
Thank you.
Grant addendums, is there a motion?
I move to grant the addendum.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tax abatements, under $1,000. Town council discussion in action, possible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements under $1,000 received from the tax assessor in the amount of $370.51 for motor vehicles and $79.19 for tangibles.
So, this doesn't, this doesn't come in front of anybody because it's under $1,000?
Aye.
Am I correct? Okay, so, who's making the decision to put this on the table?
Order of the tax order review or the tax assessor?
Thank you.
Drive a motion for acceptance.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Are you gonna do the runoff for me?
Yes, I'm gonna sound.